All right, Mr. Chair, we're just waiting on Keith giving us screen whenever he's ready.
Ready to go?
Good, okay. All right. Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Troutdale Planning Commission for Wednesday, May 25th, 2022. If we could have roll call, please, Mr. Lopez.
Commissioner Witrin.
President.
Commissioner Waydilla.
Here.
Commissioner Prickett.
Here.
Commissioner Wilcox.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
Leave his on the call.
And Chair Stephenson.
Here. Okay, at this time, I'd like everyone in the room to stand and we'll be doing Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Waydilla will be leading us to see. And any comments received on non-agenda items?
Not on non-agenda items, Mr. Chair, so we'll defer on our agenda items.
Right into continuation.
That was on the agenda, Mr. Chair, your call if you want to read the preliminaries, but that's your call.
Okay, so tonight we are continuing the hearing on case file 75-11, middle housing. This is a type four application. And this is continued from the May 11th, 2022 meeting. And before we do that, I will go through hearing procedure. And as I just stated, the matter will be, we will be doing tonight and like to give you history, the planning commission and the procedure will be following for this public hearing. The planning commission is an appointed seven-member volunteer body of Troutdale citizens. Members of the planning commission are Troutdale residents who've been appointed by the city council. They serve four-year terms. They're strictly volunteers and receive no pay or stipend for their services. The planning commission serves as a citizen committee for the review of land use applications and various land use related matters within the city. Items which the planning commission consider include uses of land, subdivisions, major variances, land use policy plans, and development regulations. For some land use applications, the planning commission makes a final decision for other applications. They are simply making a recommendation to the city council who renders the final decision. Quasi judicial public hearings are held in accordance with Oregon law and procedures contained in the Troutdale Development Code. The hearing proceeds as follows. City staff presents their report, which includes applicable criteria and standards for the matter under consideration in land use application. All testimony and evidence should be directed towards these criteria. If you believe that other criteria in the comprehensive plan, development code, or other city land use regulations apply, you must identify these criteria and explain why they apply to the decision. The planning commission accepts public testimony relating to the application. The applicant is allowed to speak first, followed by proponents, then by opponents, and then by any parties neutral to the application. An opportunity will be provided to anyone testifying to clarify any issues raised. All issues raised by a participant during the public hearing must be sufficiently clear and specific to allow the planning commission and other parties an opportunity to respond to those issues. Failure to raise an issue during this public hearing may invalidate a future appeal based on that issue. Prior to closing the public hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The planning commission must grant the request either by continuing the public hearing to a future date or by leaving the record open for at least seven days to admit only that specific additional written evidence or testimony. If the record is left open for the additional written evidence or testimony, any participant may file a written request for an opportunity to respond to new evidence submitted during the period the record was left open. If such a request is filed, the planning commission shall reopen the record to allow any person to raise new issues which relate to the new evidence, testimony, or criteria for decision making. Tonight's application is a type four hearing and the planning commission will be making a recommendation to the city council. Go ahead and we want to do staff first and then reopen.
Sure.
Okay. And so with that, we will open reopen case file 7511, middle housing, type four application. And.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening to you and planning commission and anybody watching. This is again a continuation of a matter that we began two weeks ago, so for the benefit of time, but also just for the benefit of new people on board watching or taking part or watching in posterity, a brief reminder on this application real quick. Yeah, this application, we've kind of termed the middle housing application, although there are a number of things that are being considered by this. It is a text amendment to the development code. No actual development is actually being proposed. And again, as the chair mentioned, the preliminary, the planning commission is making a recommendation to city council who will take final action. If there's any appeals of council's decision, it is automatically referred to the state land use port of appeals or Luba. Critically, with this particular application, if no, if the city does not take action by July 1st, a state model code takes into effect until the city determines if it wants to use local amendments and local changes to the development code. Otherwise, certain factors are automatically affected, ineffective, I should say. What this application is primarily doing is incorporating state requirements from House Bill 2001, which was passed in 2019. For us, what this means introduces new definitions, which are found in chapter one. It requires largely middle housing typologies, that is duplexes, triplexes, four or quadplexes, townhomes, and cottage cluster housing to be permitted wherever single-family detached housing is permitted. In other words, you cannot have exclusively zones that are exclusively single-family residential. It does continue to allow for single-family detached to be developed. It does not prohibit single-family detached homes, so that's a critical point to make. This text amendment will also bring up our code to greater compliance with other state changes that have occurred legally over the years. There were some areas of the code where there were not changes made, but in order to be maintaining with state requirements, both legal and legislative, we, we need to make some changes. It is also seeking to rename certain zoning districts to match, better match land use designation. It consolidates several of these residential zoning districts where there is really no longer a material need to have such granular separation. And it restructures actually the development code and we as staff believe it will improve readability. Excuse me, readability and reduction of cross-referencing, an easier document to use. Chapter three again will contain largely the use and dimensional standards for the zoning districts. And chapter eight governs more the design and development of new development or redevelopment when it occurs. So that's again what we're seeking to do tonight. I'm going to break away from the PowerPoint and I'm actually going to start referring again to the staff report, which was included in your packet. So I'll bring that up to screen here in just a minute and we'll go over what has changed basically since the time we met two weeks ago. And thankfully, not a whole lot has, so I think this can be relatively straightforward. But we'll focus on a couple of the areas where we've made changes and then two small points where we believe there may need to be some additional consideration before you make a recommendation to council that were brought up. So the first thing I want to also stress is that one of the reasons for the continuation was we received testimony from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon kind of as a neutral party for our first hearing that indicated they had wanted to see some updated findings. I'm happy to report since we've updated the findings in preparation for this packet, they've given us correspondence now in support of this application, meaning that they do not find anything to object about or to, that it should be concerning for the city to move forward. So any potential concern that this body or council may have that are we consistent with state law as they read it? That's been mitigated properly. So that's one thing we wanted to share right off the bat. We think we are, we have a very approvable, defendable document that we don't suspect anyone will contest with. So wanted to make sure that got clarified right off the bat. Let me pull up the staff report here. And I hope did everyone, at least on the call, receive a copy of the staff report and had a chance to review it in their packet?
Yes.
Okay, great. The contents table just showed again where the changes were. So I'll start with page four on the updated information. That was really the bulk of the information that we wanted you to know where we made the edits. We also included the three chapters, one, five, and one, three, and eight, the three chapters that really had the biggest changes as exhibits there. In chapter one, we did update that exhibit, that chapter to incorporate the DLC suggestions and planning commission follow-up on that. Again, the most consequential change probably, which was controversial, but it is what it is, was the notion of replacing families with household and other definitions were amended required. And if you refer to those pages in the exhibit, that's where those red line changes are shown in the exhibit. So we believe we've accommodated all the required or requested changes there. In chapter three, which we're going to revisit here momentarily, exhibit B has been updated, chapter three, to incorporate again most of the DLCD changes. Also a significant change that was requested by this commission after some testimony and back and forth. This was the idea of the minimum lot size for medium density residential. Why that was important because of the concern about the minimum parking standards for triplex and quadplex. So the request was you increase your minimum lot size from what was 4,000 square feet now to 5,000 square feet. So we made that change. The other pages there on reference are where the other changes were made to the document. We also, that was also a staff request, we made sure, excuse me, sorry, that's chapter eight, I'll get back to that. In chapter eight, exhibit C, we updated also to take into account the DLC suggestions and that staff request. We had updated the purpose statements for the lower, low-density residential zoning districts. Updated the parking requirements for triplexes and quadplexes to match the state law. And as account changed, the minimum lot size to something a little bit more comfortable for the community. We think, we hope, we got the wording that you had suggested correctly in the draft. So you may want to double check to make sure that we're specifying it correctly. We incorporated the MU3 development standards, which we had inadvertently left out. So they are now baked into this exhibit. And again, those are the page numbers in chapter eight. You can reference in your packet for where those red lines are. And then lastly, the big change on the findings, which are, which we will get to also momentarily. We updated the findings. They have been stress tested by the Fair Housing Council and they've reported back favorably. So we believe we have findings in place with those red line changes that are adoptable and recommendable, if you can say that, to council. We feel pretty good that it will not be challenged. Any questions before I get on to two smaller topics that are new, but have been brought up in the past two weeks? That will want your feedback for later this evening prior to any action taken. And I'll stop sharing for the moment.
Commissioner Wilcox.
I'm not sure this is the time I had a question within the staff report. Should I save that for later?
You can go ahead and do it now, sir.
Okay. On page seventeen, at the middle of the page talks about 1% and 3%. I don't quite understand what that means.
If it's all right, Mr. Wilcox, I'll defer that until we get to that red line summary on that. And I'll, I'll try to explain it a little bit further.
Okay, fine.
Okay, not seeing any other questions.
Okay, the next thing we want to talk about, Mr. Chair, we're going to start in chapter three. Let me pull up the page here, so give me one moment to do that. And I'll talk about the issue again, this is staff highlighting it. Once you close the public hearing, you can return to this issue and figure out what you want to do with it. Or nothing, that's fine too, not doing nothing is also an option. That is always an option, maybe not always the best option, but in this case it is worth consideration. So we'll, we'll pull it up here. All right, the first situation what we want to bring to your attention is the land use table for chapter three. And you'll notice that we have our zoning districts up here. We have low density, the medium density, and then the high density residential. The TC indicates high density residential within the town center district. One of the concerns that the staff had when we were putting together this table was single-family detached homes have historically been an allowed use in the town center. And there are for, for, in what is currently the A2 zoning district. So right now in the town center, the A2 zoning district constitutes some larger properties which are already developed and then a smaller grouping of small lots, pretty much along Third Street in downtown. There's a strip of about five blocks of homes that are in A2. Some of them are duplexes, some of them are single family, and some are some variety thereof. There's two kinds of concerns about this. One is there are some lots that are being considered for development or in some cases redevelopment. And the question is, what is an appropriate scale for a lot size of that size now? A lot of our high-density residential lots are larger, presumed to be larger for apartment or multifamily development, but we have lots as small as 5,000 square feet that had been presumed to be for something less than that. But right now, the current proposal shows that really nothing below a townhouse. So single-family detached duplex, tries, quads would not be allowed. You could do townhomes and partition it, and we do have some townhome development in that zoning district in that area. But we also know Alex and I have received some applications or some pre-applications wanting to look at duplex development. So the concern is you may have some perspective development that might be on the horizon that may actually work well for that lot, but in this current iteration, they would not be allowed anymore. And we do not allow use variances in our code. So one question we'll have and we'll, we'll present, we'll represent it to you when it's back in your court here in a little bit is do you want to revisit that column there where we do not currently allow duplex, tries, and quads? And maybe allow them as permitted uses? Or would you entertain an option, not tonight, but maybe at a future hearing to consider rezoning those properties along Third Street, which can get sticky because you're not dealing with just one property. You're dealing with several properties. And usually it's the property owner that takes the initiative to rezone and not the city. But might say mixed use, a general mixed user, and you to be a better zoning district or not. So really that's your discretion tonight, how you want to do it. But we're alerting it to you because there is perspective development that could be hinging on that decision, how you want to do that.
We permit a townhouse, but we don't permit.
Right. And the concern is if you, if you only want to permit single-family detached, the new state law that requires you to allow the rest of the middle house, you could have it in such a way where you allow duplex, tries, and quads, but you don't allow cottage clusters, that's fine, provided you don't also allow for single-family detached. That's that threshold.
Would there even be a good reason why you wouldn't allow?
You could argue, you know, when we're talking about town centers, you're talking about developing at a more dense environment. Are you using the land quote unquote efficiently? You could also make the same fair point, are you using the land economically? Where is the demand? Where is the interest in housing? So you're actually been opening it up. So that's a judgment call. The staff recommendation would be you change these to permitted uses. That's the cleaner thing to do. You're not dealing then with a more difficult and like the map amendment and you allow prospective development to proceed. But that can be discussed here momentarily, but that'll be our recommendation, you see, change it to be. The second one, which again, I think you can, we have the option of not doing anything, but it's something to consider is on the next table, which is the dimensional standard table, where we made the changes for medium density residential. The first version showed these as 4,000 minimum size square footage lots, and they are now 5,000. Now, the concern staff has is that the minimum lot width here remains 40 feet. We had not tinkered with that. So imagine a typical lot dimension. If you were having a 40-foot wide lot, that's 100 feet deep, right? That's 4,000 square foot lot. If you're going to require a 5,000 square foot minimum lot size and you can allow up to a 40-foot lot width, you'd have to have like a 125-foot deep lot. Where it gets sticky is if you are having a typical downtown block of 200 feet square, you might be running into dimensional issues. So one option you could do is to, if you're wanting to increase this to 5,000 square feet, you may want to consider also upping the minimum lot width to 50 feet. If you're concerned about creating kind of weird lot dimensions, or you can just leave it alone and allow it to be 40 feet, but understand that we may not be able, or that could be, that could be a perceived as somewhat a trap probably isn't the right word, but it's like almost a false invitation that, oh, I can get a 40-foot wide width, but you know, if I think I can only go back 100 feet, then I haven't created a lot size. So historically, it's always been, you know, for 50 feet wide for a 5,000-foot plot, 40 feet wide for a 4,000-square-foot lot. And here you have that discrepancy. You can leave it alone. Or if you don't, if you want to change it, then we would recommend changing the lot width to 50 feet. It would be a little long.
So 50 would probably make more sense from
if it would probably make more sense, it would also probably, since you're, the reason you wanted to increase it was to accommodate for more off-street parking. You're probably then going to run into less instances of variances being sought to accommodate parking and building geometry.
Unless you park along this driveway.
Yeah, so if, if you needed a staff recommendation, we would suggest bumping it to 50. Can you live with 40? You can, but we wanted to highlight that, that that could be something to think about. We just didn't catch it when we changed it two weeks ago. So those are the only two other wrinkles that we have discovered in talking with both applicants and then doing just our final cursory review. But you, you do have an approvable, passable document, even if you didn't do anything. So with that, are there any other, are there any questions about those two items? And then we'll move on to the findings and I'll address Mr. Wilcox's question here momentarily.
Any questions for staff at this point? All right.
Okay, let me move on to the findings here. Can everyone see it should say proposed findings on the top of that screen right there? Can all see that? Okay, great. Okay, so again, in, in your staff report beginning on page 15, that's where the findings are. So anything that is new is in red. And really, there was only one finding that was truly expanded upon. And hopefully you've had a chance to review the language. But this had to do primarily with ensuring that the city was responding adequately to the finding and properly referencing its housing need analysis and properly referencing, as they say, goal 10, which is the housing goal in the state of Oregon's land use standards. So what we basically did is we cited references. We included a table that exists in our housing need analysis. We provided figures as far as how many housing units do we have to produce? What our goals are for middle housing typologies, which we have. And we go on to say, and that is the absolute truth, Troutdale has already met its middle housing goals, in particular for townhouse development, 18 years in advance of when the deadline has been. So we are meeting the housing need we have, we're properly referencing it. Now, to the point of where, where Mr. Wilcox was asking a question about the 1, 1 to 3% situation. This comes from a, a, a provision in the Oregon administrative rules that says if your city say allows for, or says you need to build 1,000 units, because of this new law, you're basically being told to acknowledge that you can add additional number of units beyond what you're required to do. So if you're factoring in 3% of 1,000 units, you can actually build then 30 additional units than what your housing needs analysis allows for. You have to basically say that you can commit to doing that. And you're following the spirit and intent of the middle housing law. Because the middle housing law, as some of the advocates would say, was designed to increase the possibility of housing construction. And so when you're talking about a housing need analysis and a buildable land inventory, we had sufficient inventory, so it really wasn't a problem for us to say that. But for cities that didn't have it, it provided a so-called relief valve that says, oh, you might be kept, you might have a need of 1,000, you have room for only 980. All of a sudden now you can apply 30 additional units and you can accompany, accomplish that within with, within your existing city boundaries. So it's a little technical, but the, the, the critical thing to know is that in Troutdale's case, it really wasn't a significant increase in the number of housing units we're required to deliver. And we have already met the middle housing goal that the housing needs analysis required us to meet. So it's really a perfunctory, it's really a referencing of the standard that we've already accomplished. I hope that made sense. It's kind of technical, but it's nothing really to, to sweat about. So the 1% refers to infill locations and the 3% refers to locations that have not been greenfield sites. That's what, what that is. I hope I answered that question, Commissioner Wilcox. Feel free to ask a follow-up if, if I hadn't. Or anybody else from the commission.
Commissioner Wilcox, how can I do it for you?
I think it went over my head, but it's somewhat irrelevant, I'm okay with it.
Any other questions? So since we've already met that, do we get like any housing coupons?
I'm still waiting for the gold star personally, but we I'm still waiting for the gold star personally, but we haven't gotten it yet. Um, maybe it's lost in the mail. But critically beyond, beyond this section in red and beyond effectively referencing work that we've already done. The findings remain in place and remain still approvable. And we believe from a staff perspective, the findings. Are all met. So there's really no further. Staff commentary we have to offer for you folks tonight. Um, we, we hope you've had a chance to review the staff report two weeks ago as well as tonight. We're confident you have a approvable amendment, even if it's forced on you. But there really shouldn't be any further action. We continue to recommend that you recommend. An approval to council with a request that council also considers an emergency declaration with unanimous approval from them. I'll yield back Mr. Chair, any further final questions before public testimony?
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
This is Rich.
Go ahead, sir.
So last time we met, we skipped over some sections. Were we going to go over those or? Did you record where sections were skipping?
The sections we were skipping as far as, um, do you have a specific reference on that?
Well, we were going through the document and there's some sections we came up to. It's like, oh, that's going to be a more involved one. We'll skip over that for now and move on and. Oh, I'm not sure that we ever went back to those.
You're, are, are you referring to portions of the code where we will have to revisit it with a future text amendment?
I don't know. We skipped it.
Okay. My, my recollection was it was like with manufactured homes, manufactured home parks, how we will have to have a future. Amendment. Um, we will intend to include that in your work plan in the future. So it was that. It also had to deal with chapter seven and, um, open space requirements for townhome development. Since we can't put it in the design and dimension standards, we are intending to do it. In the, um, in the subdivision, uh, section of, of, of the code. But because that was not part of this text amendment, it has to be at a future date.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions for staff? Alright. So at this time. Is there anyone wishing to testify as a proponent?
Uh, Mr. Chair. The city did receive correspondence from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon in addition to. Uh, two other entities, one of which was Thousand Friends of Oregon and. And the, um, housing land advocates, uh, both three interest groups. Uh, this is their letter. So effectively, again, you were familiar with the Fair Housing Council provided the, the feedback saying, please. Beef up your, your findings. Uh, they are test of these three groups now based on the new findings are testifying together. And are all expressing support or shared support of this application. They have made a recommendation. I, I think I know what the answer will be from this body, but they have made a request or consideration. That this commission consider parking lot, uh, standard reductions. Uh, they have expressed those. Thoughts in this correspondence. I will email it to each of the planning commissioners here after we're done. So you can open it up to review as well. Again, we received this just a couple of hours ago. So it's pretty fresh. But the important thing to, to relay is that, uh, they are in support of the application, that the findings are. To their satisfaction and that they will not object to anything moving forward.
Adjusting the parking standard would be a significant event and, um. We had this sooner, we might have been able to really consider.
Sure.
Okay.
So we'll get that correspondence sent out to you all right now and we can refer back to.
And you said you had another one?
That was it, Mr. Chair.
Anyone wishing to testify as an opponent? Any neutral parties wishing to testify? Okay. No more testing. Okay, uh, with that entertaining motion close.
Chair, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Here we have a motion to second, close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye. Host. Public hearings close.
And Mr. Chair, on the last page of your staff report is, um, some suggestions for. Getting this through to make your edits and to have action on your recommendation. So you can refer to that. Staff is requesting again, uh, any commentary or direction or edits you want to do on the two tables we referenced earlier. Land use allowances in HDR town center and the lot size or lot width issue. For medium density residential, we can bring them back on page or on screen if you need to.
And you're saying your instructions are on page 20.
I believe so. Have it in front of you right now, but.
Chair, we'll probably start with the dimensional standards one, which is probably going to be, I think, pretty easy. Uh, going from 40 to 50 feet just seems to make sense if we're going to go to 5,000 feet. So we don't get that narrow look and we also accomplish the. Parking standard that we're looking for to give it a little more off street parking. So. Uh, I am in support of that.
Uh, anyone opposed to that?
I would agree.
Hearing none, we will roll through that.
Alright. And then to the other table here, which is now on screen about this column here, the second to last one. Where these ends are basically located, the matter before you is, do you wish to keep them ends and then potentially entertain a future map amendment? Or do you wish to switch these to permitted uses? Uh, which would avoid some non-conformities and allow for some prospective development to continue on.
I would recommend. Uh, that we turn those to permitted. Anyone opposed?
This is Rich, Commissioner Allen. I'm thinking you're right.
It just gives us an opportunity to do some things a little less dense if we wanted to.
And you know, you also have the housing needs analysis and our housing. Your, your sale too. So you can go a little bit less dense because you've already produced so many units thus far.
Trying to think of a downside. Chair, but I, I, I think permitted is probably the way to go.
Okay.
I don't see anything negative.
Alright.
Those, those changes have marked in blue on screen. So, uh, if you're choosing later on commissioners to make. A. A recommendation to. Approve the draft as written or as amended, uh, that would be your recommendation because you've made amendments to this draft. And that would come before your findings. So we'll, we'll help you with that motion when we get there.
Okay. Alright. So I think we should probably just go back over this one more time, make sure we haven't missed anything.
You're meeting Mr. Chair, whatever.
Um, so we started with one. Anybody have any questions, concerns? Anything in there? I like the illustrations a lot. I did have a question. When I look at the definition for office, right?
Let me catch up with you. Sorry.
Sorry, page one dash 15. Uh, professional services, medical offices and clinics, veterinary clinics. And we run a lot of those same ones under service use.
So.
So we're trying to separate those out. Are we trying to combine those? But we. Not sure what we're trying to do.
Let me take a look at services real quick. It's a fair question. I mean, it might be a duplication. I mean, if, if, I guess the question maybe before the commission should be is, do you consider all offices to be service uses? Cause then you might just be able to just simply strike through the word office and then update the table accordingly. Or do you want to?
It talks about things that, okay. You know, services may typically be conducted in offices or clinics and often have limited or no retail presence. That's true, but some of them we're talking about do have kind of a significant retail presence. And then you have other ones where it is just a support service where there's really no retail presence at all.
I, I, I think the distinction we were trying to think of from a staff perspective is an office. Is conducted primarily indoors. Whereas a service use such as say, and this is kind of a broader definition, but a vehicular service may not be always. Right? So it's more of a general classification, although we.
So would you just try to say indoor? Limited activities conducted indoors?
Well, I think for, for offices, what we have listed here. Let me, let me do this real quick, cause then we can look at the definitions together. I'm sorry. Give me one moment to.
Alright.
To, um. Pull it up on a word document here.
Sorry, guys.
No, it's okay. I mean, these are important to, to consider.
Okay. You want to comment or?
Oh no, I was just letting, letting folks read this. I didn't know if you were asking for staff comment.
See what I mean though? It's kind of red clothes and I'm like, seems like we're like. Not quite split apart and not quite together.
I think one, one consideration you may want to have and, and appreciate you, you pulling this up. Where it may, where you may want to be careful about removing one definition over the other. Is in the use table. Uh, so let me, let me check on that real quick where we're at with that.
Because just like you can have an office for nonprofit. And we kind of limit that.
Okay, so, um, let me, let me decouple from this real, uh, the, the, the image you have on your screen real quick. And let me bring up the use, the, the table, because this might be illustrative here. The table, and again, the, the, this is precisely why, why we want to do use tables, because then we have a definition tied with, with a, a category. We have retail, which is defined in it actually as a very short and sweet definition. We do now define offices. So we have, that's why we created an office definition. Because we were trying to create an office classification. We were doing that, and this is again in the commercial districts here. Where we wanted to set certain size parameters as far as how big of an office is appropriate for what type of zoning district. So that's why we were doing that. Now services, you won't see something that says just simply service use. Services is really kind of an umbrella thing. Because we do make distinctions between personal services, human and vehicular. Um, so. Service use was a carryover legacy definition that we've had in the code. But not every service use is the same. So I think service use in the case of the definition perspective was trying to be a larger catchall. For the variety of types of services, but really it's the use table which determines what it might be appropriate where. And offices were seen as distinctive enough to have its separate land use, which is why it got its own unique definition.
Right.
So, um, with that in mind.
Which is fine. You got the office piece, but then you still got to tie it back.
So if, I guess, if, if, if the staff recommendation, I think right now is what you want to do is maybe. Either simplify or even strike through the service definition, because you do have one. For office, um, but maybe you simplify.
We don't have one for service.
Well, you don't have a line item on the use table that says service use, because you have three different types. And that's why it's called, you know, financial institution. So we listed a couple of other uses. That are in the table and service is just a catchall definition. But maybe you. You know, so when it says services may typically be conducted or in offices or clinics, that's describing the setting, the, the. Place that the service is being conducted in. But the use may be more specific to. Veterinary or. Financial institution or whatever it might be. So maybe just striking the word office or and say indoors. Or outdoors. Maybe just eliminating that, that whole second sentence. Might be your cleanest thing.
Off of service use.
Yeah. So that might be the, the cleanest thing to do. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm still on the other thing. Let me go back to the, um. The comparison between definitions. So what staff is suggesting again is that this section that's highlighted here, strike through that sentence. And you might have hopefully clarified or provided enough distinction between office. And service.
I think you'll have to put nonprofit, the one office to. Because it could be an office for a nonprofit, right?
Sure.
You guys agree? Okay.
And so this would be potentially struck through. This would be.
Is that alright? Alright.
That appears to clean it up a little more.
Alright, and, um. Okay. So the next one is the. I'm still trying to get this one. Recreation passive and active. So there's one like a city park and the other's like a county park. Cause county parks really have anything good.
Okay, let me pull up that page and catch up with you here just a moment. You're talking about these definitions here?
Yeah. So we're just further defining the park itself. Cause they both fall under park.
Yeah, uh, they are both, they are both considered parks or parks and recreation amenities, but not all parks are the same. Some parks generate noise. Some parks generate noise or generate vehicles and visitors and others are passive. You know. Imagination Station does not equate to Helen Altus. One is more of a natural area, would be more passive Helen. And then Imagination Station Columbia is active. It has parking. It has amenities. So that's what we're trying to have the distinction, because if you're thinking about. The establishment of a park or bringing in, say, a skateboard facility or a pickleball court or whatever. That can change the dynamic of how a park is, and that probably deserves greater scrutiny and notification. And that's really where we were trying to.
That's where you're going.
Have it there is that this group can arbitrate any concerns the citizens have about. Things that make a little bit more noise or generate a lot, a little bit more traffic.
Okay.
But we're not married to it. I mean, this was just our best guess on how to. Sure.
We redefine families.
Anyhow, so that's, that's where we were going with that.
All right. So the next one would be three.
Chapter three.
So do you guys have any issues with anything in three? On three, one, four.
Let me just catch up with you. Sorry. Three dash, I'm sorry, three.
Three point one four on page three thirteen.
Let me get it on the screen here. Okay.
Okay, so just help me out here. We've got a maximum density of 100% and then in number four down here. Under maximum densities, maximum density does not apply. To those, but if we're at 100%. What doesn't apply?
Give me just a second to read through it real quick to make sure we're. Addressing that correctly. What this is saying with number four is that you cannot just apply a numerical cap on how many units per acre. Those housing typologies listed in four are, what it is saying is that. The lot based on the size and based on your height restriction. Will ultimately determine how many units an acre you get. Don't pull a number, basically. That's what it's saying. So there is still going to be some cap applied to it, but it is not a firm number. It is based on the proportionate size of the lot. And frankly, it'll also be determined based on the. Economics of a prospective project. That's what it's saying.
Any comments on that? You know, this is a little dry, but we need to kind of go through it one last time before we send it up the hill. Make sure we didn't miss anything. I don't have anything else for three unless you guys do. Sound like anybody has anything? So if we're going to eight. Okay. I have one eight point zero six zero on page eight dash eight.
Okay, let me catch up with you.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, on MU two, 10%. For landscaping just seems a little light. You know, we were at 15 and we went to 10 and I'm just trying to remember why we went to 10. From 15.
I don't have a recollection of that. So there's a desire to go to 15. I don't think there's a. A good reason why not. Unless you can think of one, Alex. I don't recall.
Okay.
I remember, right? We were just saying it was a big jump from MU one to MU two going from five to 15. We're just narrowing that gap, if I remember correctly.
Okay.
But. I'm good. I'm good either way.
I mean, that's always a standard that could be buried or secreted for if they wanted less.
Yeah, that's true. Right. Go down from the 15. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but if, if I remember right, Commissioner Witten, that was why we, was that big jump between the two. Once went from five to 15 to third. He was correct. I remember that. But 15 probably would be better.
Yeah, and two just covers a lot of properties.
Right.
Okay, so we moved two to fifteen. You guys okay with that?
Yes.
All right, let's see what else.
Well, again, that's not, not something that the state. Regulates. So that's, that's individual choice there.
Why don't they?
Don't, don't encourage.
Good job on the illustrations too. Did those.
The state. Nice try, but we can't take credit for that. Because actually, I believe Angelo Planning Group who advised the state, I think, was consultant done.
They're an interesting, yeah. Been around a long time. Anything else for chapter eight?
Commissioner Wilcox.
Commissioner Wilcox, please.
I've got a couple in chapter eight. First one. Page eight dash three. The soul. Paragraph printed in red, D four. I'd just like to get a better explanation of that exactly.
What this means is that. You cannot, cities are prohibited from. Requiring a land use application for middle housing typologies. The only type of middle housing. Project that can be gone through a land use application is if you're creating a subdivision for a townhome development. We've had two recently, the two projects on Halsey Street, which were townhome projects. Those are subject to the subdivision standards and those require an application before this body. But previously, if somebody wanted to, or I guess in the current code soon to be outdated code. If somebody wanted to bring a triplex. To. A zoning district where it's currently allowed, they would have to go through a land use application at the staff level. So Alex and I would have to review it first before it could get a building permit application. And now what the state is saying is, no, it's now just one application. It's done at the building plan review. That's not to say that Alex and I wouldn't be reviewing those applications, but we can't require a land use decision first. In order for a building application, building permit application to be processed. It's designed to shorten the amount of review. It doesn't negate. The ability for the city to still regulate and ensure that this project is being done within the standards and chapter eight. And it also from a utility. Capacity perspective, the sufficient infrastructure, public works reviews those applications at the building permit level two. So they do their review during that time as well.
Do they actually believe this?
Well, I mean, I think it's fair to say that if you require a land use review, you are adding at least. Forty-five days to a developer's pro forma to construct housing. Time is money. I mean, I think that is a fair argument that the state is making. And I will tell you, the staff right now has the capacity to do concurrent review because of the technology we have. I don't think previously we could have, but we've already tried to do things internally anyway. The state is now just saying, so do it. But will that magically lead to more housing or better housing affordability? I think you folks can figure that out, but it's.
We change the timeline, shorten it up at all.
Well, by not requiring a land use review, you are.
Yeah.
Or they are, I should say, that's their requirement.
Okay, so it's just basically less, less restrictive. My other question is way back toward the end, page eight dash forty-seven. Let's see, looking at eight point two three oh. Very last listing, actually, letter H. Live work units are required to be multi-story structures. Is that a state requirement?
That is not a state requirement. That is something that is actually in our current code when we created the zoning district. It was just. Thought that it would be more efficient, a more efficient use of land that if you had a live work unit. That you just don't have a side by side situation where your dwelling unit is on the same floor as your commercial unit.
The theory was that the dwelling unit would be lower or above the. The commercial part of the operation.
It's, it's similar to the, the height expectation for middle housing units that they have to be 25 feet tall. You don't want to have a single floor duplex.
Right.
Because that just eats up. What we perceive to be valuable land in that zoning district, which is uniquely applied to the confluence property.
Does that work?
Oh, okay. So that's, that's specific to that person, that specific to that particular zoning district.
Yes.
Okay.
Particular use.
And yeah, that particular use and that particular zoning district. We don't have that anywhere else.
Okay, so what I was thinking was, you know, depending on the floor plan of the unit, you could have. You know, the live work on the same floor, but if you're wanting to go vertical in the MU three, I can, I can see the point of that now.
Yep.
Okay.
Mister Chair, I have a kind of a dumb question.
Go ahead.
On eight dash eight zoning district or use that says multifamily, are we? Are, should it be different? Because families been redefined as household?
No, we, what we discussed is having, we have family all over the place. So I think our definition is, goes back to household, correct?
The definition goes back to household. And in this case, it's referring to the type of building and that. That hasn't changed. That's still an industry standard.
Okay, now I just wanted to make sure we weren't like.
Yeah, you're good.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Anybody else? Members of the public? Okay, so the plan would be to wrap this up all nice and neat. As amended and then. Chris and I will go to the city council and ask them to expedite this. So that it is in effect by July first. So we're not in a position where we have to go with state code at all.
And those city council hearings, presuming you make a recommendation tonight, are scheduled for the 14th and 28th of June.
Right.
And so the edits you've proposed tonight, presuming they hold. We would incorporate that into the council draft, the city council draft. So that'll be the clean version for them to.
That they will get one version, correct?
That's right.
Okay. It won't get yellow or red.
No.
Okay.
And we have a list of those amendments.
I'm sorry, sir.
So we have a list of those amendments that we made.
Yes, yeah, I've kept a running tally of it. So.
Yeah, so this would be as amended.
Right. So you're, if you do want to take. Again, referring to page, the last page of your staff report. Kind of on that step four, which you're currently doing the draft, well, excuse me. Proposed changes, well, that's talking about findings. I'm, I'm sorry, I guess I did not include the, the step I should have as well. You've reviewed the, the draft amendments and amended them. So what you'll want to do is to vote on adopting the draft amendments as discussed tonight, and that'll be your recommended. That'll be your recommended package going to council.
As amended.
As amended, yes. So.
So you guys good on that?
So you need a.
We would need a motion.
Motion to adopt.
I can.
Amendments.
I can type one out for you.
We would need a motion to adopt seven, five, one, one as amended.
Okay. Chair. I'll make a motion to adopt seven, five, one, one as amended this evening.
All second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. To adopt. And send a recommendation to city council. Case file seven, five, one, one, middle housing. Act four.
Just as a minute, just for clarification, if this, this motion is to recommend the draft version, you still will have to review and adopt the findings as well. So you need to take.
Oh, I'm sorry. I shortcutted that. Sorry about that.
So if you, if you. So I guess, Mr. Witcher, I think your motion is still okay to clarify what you're doing with this action in this vote is. To recommend the draft amendment as amended to city council for recommendation.
Correct.
So we have a motion in a second to recommend the draft. To recommend the draft. File as amended for case five one one, middle housing to city council. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, Mr. Lopez, please.
Commissioner Wittrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Waydilla?
Yes.
Commissioner Prickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Chair Stephenson?
Yes, okay. Now, I want one more.
And at this point, Mister Chair, you may want to entertain a motion to adopt the findings. And for case file seventy-five eleven, since there have been no proposed amendments tonight. So as written is fine.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion to accept the findings for case file seven one one presented.
Mister Chair.
Commissioner Prickett.
I move that we adopt the proposed findings as written for case file. Seven five dash one one.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Prickett, second by Commissioner Wittrin. To accept findings written for case seven Y five one one. As presented. Any discussion on the motion?
Do we need to have the emergency order put into this motion or not?
That'll be your last step here.
Yeah.
That'll come. That's right.
Okay. Go ahead, Alex.
Commissioner Wittrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Waydilla?
Yes.
Commissioner Prickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
And Chair Stephenson?
Yes. Do that one passes. And due to the. Date sensitive issue of this. We are recommending that the city council make an emergency. Declaration. And hear this at their May.
At the June fourteenth and June twenty-eighth.
June fourteenth and June twenty-eight meetings. And with an emergency declaration, it will be in place by July first.
Right.
And that way we will. Reply. That will be our recommendation, correct?
That is your recommendation. So that's item six on your staff report there that last.
Did you get all that, Alex? All right. Everyone okay with that?
Yes.
But I just have a second on that, right?
Yeah, you can do a clean action, and that is to vote for recommending approval of the text amendment to the city council. For future consideration. With an emergency declaration for date effective July first. And you can just say so moved.
Okay. So. All right.
Mister Chair. I move that we recommend approval of the text manual application to the city council for future consideration with an emergency declaration.
Okay.
I'll second that one.
Okay, we're motioned by Commissioner Prickett, second by Commissioner Wittrin. To approve the findings. In the application with an emergency declaration to city council. Any discussion on the motion? Okay.
Sir, it's Commissioner Wilcox.
Oh, Commissioner Wilcox, sorry.
So what I'm hearing is it'll be. Two ordinance hearings. In June. And then you're saying it'll be. Effective. July first, I think there's normally, so they're doing away with the thirty day waiting. I'd like to get, actually, I'd like to get. Commissioner Allen's opinion on that, how that works, since he's an ex counselor. If that's the correct procedure and timeline, it's being followed.
To my knowledge, that would be correct. Without emergency declaration, we would miss the July first date and the model ordinance would come into effect.
Correct. And my understanding, Commissioner Wilcox, is that by doing the emergency declaration, it would go into effect immediately.
With, with the added stipulation that it's a unanimous council action. It has to be unanimous in order for an emergency to be declared.
Okay.
So if, if one council objects to it, then it will go into effect thirty days from June twenty-eighth.
And yeah, it'd be easier if we didn't have to ask for that, but we're kind of out of time.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Any other discussion on the motion? Okay.
Commissioner Wittrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Waydilla?
Yeah.
Commissioner Prickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
And Chair Stephenson?
Yes, that passes. Thank you all very much. This has been a lot of work and a really heavy lift. I want to thank you guys for all that you've done with this. Over and over and over. Staff for putting together excellent package. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Chair, I move that we close the public hearing?
I haven't done.
We did that.
Oh, okay. I'm just making sure.
We did, sorry.
Double sure.
Yeah.
Mister Chair, item, item four is going to be relatively brief. So if you're okay just moving into that rather than taking a recess, we can just cover that. Okay. Just a reminder, I think it was brought up two weeks ago. There are, and, and certainly tonight indicated it too, there are going to be a number of future text amendments that are going to have to be considered, some of which is going to be required by state law or changes to state law, some of which has also been. More locally requested. So we wanted to give you kind of a preview of. Future work, hopefully less laborious than this last effort about some other changes to the text amendment. You're going to have an application. In June. On June twenty-second, so the fourth Thursday of June. Which we'll get to here in the department report also about June eighth, but on June twenty-second, we have a text amendment hearing. That will seek to add a couple of land uses or change the permissions on land uses in industrial zoning districts. Both, both the light industrial and the general. So that'll be before this body. When we do that, we're hoping to also introduce the use table for industrial uses at that time too. So it'll match the use tables situation that we have. That we just went through, because right now the industrial zoning districts we didn't touch. We knew we were going to, and this amendment will have that table as well as those land uses stacked next to each other. So it'll be a relatively good review for you all to look at what you want to do.
Okay.
On that. So that's, that's forthcoming. We've also talked about the desire for a potential variance adjustment as far as the criteria of what. May be varied by staff and what should require upper review. We would not be able to make the June, the, the, the DLCD notification deadline, so we can't do it for June. So it's just the industrial use, but we have that. Item, we also have the subdivision chapter that we'll have to look at. Very holistically. And we also know we will have manufactured home and manufactured home park standards we'll have to look at. So the question is, with those three other prospective text amendments, the question is, do you wish to consolidate those efforts into one larger text amendment? Or do you feel like you need to handle those? Individually or maybe grouped some way, because this is going to affect your, your calendar.
June twenty-second.
Well, the June twenty-second one is, is base. You're going to have that one, and that'll be the one and only topic is industrial. For those three other ones. How do you want to handle that? Because you could do three separate, but that's also a lot of work. You could consolidate it, but that gets to be a pretty big report because you're dealing with three kind of distinct issues. But you could chalk it up as general code maintenance perhaps.
Right, but if we take them all separately, we're going in and doing. Five text amendments between May and September.
Well, and I guess that also begs the question for this commission, how urgent are these changes that you are seeking to have? You probably, we, we haven't heard of any, say, manufactured homes or home parks that are being planned, but right now you don't have any standards at all that are effective. You know, the variance one is a perhaps a consideration because of.
Right.
Community concern, but how urgent is that?
That'd be the one I'd like to get on the front burner. Out of those.
Yeah, and then the subdivision one apart from maybe the concern about townhome open space. The subdivision one has some structural issues that staff would like to see fixed, but it really hasn't.
Need a little more time on your side.
Which will require a little bit more time, maybe is not as urgent perhaps, but that's why we're bringing all of these up as a collective topic tonight for discussion is how do you want us to sequence this? Because you'll also potentially have other applications along the way too, including for subdivisions, which we also expect could be coming soon too. And, and also larger plan reviews for the parks master plan and the transportation system plan. We're keeping you busy, in other words.
Yeah, busy's, busy's okay.
Yeah.
I would refer that we got the variance thing dealt with sooner than later. I know some of you. Have indicated that's kind of a priority. And then maybe we take the housing, this.
Subdivision, manufactured homes.
Subdivision of manufactured homes maybe together. As a subsequent one. What do you guys think about that?
Yeah, I'm okay splitting them up a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah.
With that?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm, I'm good.
So we would do. Variants first and then.
Okay.
Build it or fix it later.
Okay, that, that's helpful. That'll just get our calendar populated so we know kind of what we need to plan for. And of. Time, there could be again subdivision applications or conditional use applications. We just don't know, but those are three text amendments that we know. We're going to require your attention.
And this is the big one.
This was the big one.
One booked up tonight.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I think that's all we had on that discussion topic.
That's it. Okay. Staff communications.
Couple of things. First again, from the staff perspective, thank you for your diligence and, and. What equity on, on this very large text amendment. We appreciate your, your feedback and your, your, your competence in this. First thing is that there is a survey that Metro has released, we will send you the link to. And yes, it's a metro survey, but this is important. This is a survey indicating the support. For bond projects related to the parks bond. And Troutdale has two projects that are currently under consideration. For metro funding. One is a little bit smaller, but has been longstanding, and that is improvements to the bridge over Beaver Creek at Troutdale Road. Where it's currently just the two lane road with no sidewalk or bike lane or anything like that. So it's an improvement to the bridge. So it has eligibility for transportation funding. The other one, which is admittedly where most of our attention is, is for the one point nine million dollars we have asked from Metro to help support the bike and trail at the Confluence site. Along the riverfront. That, that project, the park and trail combined, the four acres is about a three and a half million dollar job. We've asked Metro for one point nine million. And the more community feedback we get. The more demonstrative it is that the community has support. I mean, this has been a fifteen year project in the making. We have engineering lined up now. To a degree where it could be built if funded within the next two years, but. A strong community voice through survey and through. Feedback and engagement is really critical for us at this point. So we will send the link out. You'll hear a lot about it on the city's social media. But please do take the survey. These things do matter. They do help in our score competitively across the region.
I, I will, but I just want to say. For everyone's benefit. When this all started almost four years ago. Before the bond. Happened. We were told that if the bond passed. They would fund that project. So I'd like to hold them to their word.
And there are through that bond effort, several funding vehicles for it. This is a competitive bucket of funding that we're after right here. So.
You know what I'm saying?
I do. I do.
Yeah.
Proposing another bond?
No, this is a bond that they've approved three years ago, I want to say, the Parks and Nature Bonds. It was a re-upping of two previous bonds, so it didn't add additional tax. It was a continuation of two previous bond programs.
If you learn that it'll have a negative impact.
Oh, really?
Why?
Oh, the Waven Trail you're talking about, the, on the levee? Yeah. Well, and again, the, the project we're talking about will link with the IAD four bridge trail that goes over the Lewis and Clark and then ties into the depot in downtown, and of course, the Confluence property. So that's, that's kind of the big ask we have as a. The city's closed on Memorial Day. The city also will have its June first Friday, on the first Friday of June, that's the third. Staff is wondering, we don't have any immediate business right now, and given the amount of work you folks have put in, June eighth is your next scheduled planning commission meeting, but. We don't have any hearings or. Topics that we think we could generate in a really timely fashion. So if you folks wish to cancel that meeting and then have your meeting on the twenty-second. We would not be opposed to that.
All in favor, say aye.
Without objection.
I was going to say, not all at once, you guys. I see everybody nodding their heads. Okay, so we would cancel the June eighth meeting and go with June twenty-second.
June twenty-second would be your meeting.
And then the next meeting after that.
After that would be July thirteenth and. No?
We talked about moving that one at the beginning of the year.
Oh, that is right. Hang on one second. Let's see.
To the week earlier, I believe.
Let's double check that.
Which was what?
It was going to be the first Wednesday in July. July the sixth.
Yes.
That is correct. Yep, we have that down July sixth.
Okay. Everyone remember that?
So we'll clarify that also on the agenda and on the calendar. July sixth would be live meeting date, and we do expect to have. Something for that date.
Okay. Right? That worked for everybody?
Maybe.
Maybe.
Maybe kind of sort of.
The next, June twentieth, I may be, I'm, I'm at the beach and sometimes the internet's fine, so I may not be able to attend, but I will try. And. July is going to be hard because again. It's fourth of July and usually I'm at the beach, so.
The, the other option, I mean, nothing has been firmly cemented, but we just have it targeted. We could also look to July twenty-seventh, which would be the fourth Thursday, which we didn't have anything planned for, but we can always do that. And frankly, the staff could always buy some extra time. So. That could be an option too.
So we will think that open at this point. Who pops up? While we plan on the sixth and see.
Okay. Okay, yeah, we'll confirm that as we continue into June. What that is. And then finally. To wrap up on the staff report, a little bit of personal news. I have announced earlier today that I am actually resigning from my position effective July first. The news, I suppose, if you want to call it that, or maybe it's good news, I don't know. I am taking a position with Jordan Ramus, who is a regional law firm. Jordan Ramus is contracted with the city of Troutdale. So the expectation is that I would be able to continue to serve the city, albeit just from a different. Vantage point. Jordan Ramus also has other public clients in the region as well as some private clients. It is. A new adventure for me. I think Ms. Prickett made mention about the, the difficulties it is on staff in this current regulatory environment. And frankly, it has not been easy to be a, a public planner in Oregon the last few years. It has made our job very difficult. So please understand, this is not an indictment of this community. It is some frustrations that I have in the direction that our profession is heading to in the state. And I think by joining the private sector and in this role. I have the benefit of continuing to work on behalf of this community. In a slightly different capacity where opinions can be better shared more frequently and without. Less. Dancing around the issues that the state sorely needs. Dancing around the issues that the state sorely needs to address if it's serious about caring about local planning. So it's unfortunate. I've really enjoyed my time working here. I hope that I can continue to serve this community because I really care about it. We have a terrific team. Alex is awesome. Melissa's awesome. Amber's awesome, which she's leading too. And you have you have good people. And good people also matter. On the boards and committees and the people who serve this community. You know, we always joke, we get paid to be here. Well, don't. You guys did some really, really hard work, some really, some work you didn't ask for, that you really didn't want to do. And then you had to hold your nose and and see it through, and you still did it. And that shows. The importance of civic mindedness and civic volunteers. And this board is by far in a way. The best board I've ever had to work with. In fifty years of public service. So. It's it's hard because you guys care. There are still storms on the horizon. But I'll still be around to try to help navigate when and how the city sees fit. So you're still stuck with me for at least one. And I really appreciate everybody's support. The staff certainly does, and you're still going to be in good hands. After I depart. Thank you, Mister Chairman. With that, I'll yield back.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Before we go around, I wonder, you commented about the runway. And the trail at the last meeting. I just wanted to let you know I followed up with port. The drainage district in Metro and. It's not about the trail. It's about, I guess, some trees. Okay, so what I'm trying to get now is which trees are we talking about? What's the issue with the trees?
I guess it really depends who you talk with, but I extended my piece for three years based on the premise that there would be no. Changes to the tax rate of the runways.
Right.
And. Going to be changing to the tax rate. And that's, I'm having a little bit of a problem there.
Would I be able to talk to you offline too, Marv, about that? Because I'm really curious about it. I don't believe the trail project should have any impact on that. If it is, then. I'd be happy to talk to you about it.
And and that was my comment too, was to everybody was like, you know, how could this possibly interfere with the airport? And. And their response back was it was some trees. And I said, okay, can you tell me which trees we're talking about? You know, what the what the specific issue is. So that's what I'm waiting for right now.
Yeah, I was informed that. The tenants meeting by the port that it is because of the trail and safety of the bicycle riders.
I'm going with a. On that.
Yeah.
Or at least what I'm getting, I think you are too, is it's not trail related.
It shouldn't be. If that's the excuse, then that's a cover for something else that should not equate. I mean, you have cars and box trucks that are taller than any cyclist that can ride through there.
With that, I will start with you, sir.
No, I don't have anything other than that. You know, I was surprised at the meeting that all this activity had taken place. Any of the tenants' knowledge. The activities that will be curtailed at the airport.
It's a good point. Okay. Well, the good news is it hasn't happened yet.
You're going to buy business?
I'm trying to cut that. All right, Commissioner Allen.
Just that Jordan Ramus is smart. I'd take you in a heartbeat. So I can, I sure do hope to continue working with you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Prickett?
Chris, I want to thank you for all your hard work and your and staff too. They've done a lot. It's not going to be the same. You won't get an update on your children every once in a while. But yeah, and congratulations on your new position. I know this has been hard. It's been a hard few years here. So, but we appreciate you sticking with us until the, well, not till till we got through this, not the end, but till we got through this. Sorry. I didn't mean that. I'm sorry. But thank you again. And I, um. Just be safe, everybody. Just be safe. We're going into summer months. Just be aware of everyone that's around you and the students that are out and about. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilcox?
Nothing further for me.
Okay. Commissioner Wittrin?
I will just say, Chris, you will be missed. You're definitely. A a shining point to this. Planning Commission that. We all look forward to and communicating with staff. It's it's been fantastic. And whoever's going to fill their shoes is going to have some big shoes to fill. So you will be missed and glad we got you for at least one more meeting. And thank you for everything you've done. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
It's been like five years.
Seven.
I I would just echo what. Some of the other commissioners have said, and it truly has been a pleasure to work with you. You're now standing planner, even a better person. And you'll be missed. So we're going to have you like on retainer now, or how's that going to work? You do this pro bono thing?
Are you charitable cases? Is that what you're suggesting?
It's been. It it's been a pleasure and I. Wish you and your family the best. And you'll be missed. I think you've. You've done a lot of good here.
Thank you.
And I was just thinking about. Rich and Steve Sparks and Steve Winstead and John Morgan and, you know. Just some of the people that we've had. That we've worked with and again, the pleasure we've had to work with you. And the things that you've done. I would like to say I think it would be necessary for us to. Convene after hours on the twenty second. If you're available.
Agreed.
We try to close down a local watering hole somewhere. Everyone's up for that.
Depends how long your hearing goes, Mister Chair.
Yeah, we might be at the all nighter, you know.
Let's hope not. Let's hope not.
I would love for all of us to get together and. Wish you well. You will be, I want to thank you for everything that you've done. Again, thank you for the work that you put into this. This was a really dry tablet. I personally choked on it once or twice, I think. But we got there and. I want to thank all the planning commissioners for all your work on this. This stuff is really hard, guys. I know it's hard and we have to do it. And I really appreciate your your patience and your diligence and the work that you put in. So thank you. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Chair, I make a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Have a great evening, a great holiday.